Well, hello everyone from Meridian and all my listeners across the Verin area. Welcome to Parks Investigator Live. I'm your host Investigator Park alongside our co-host Pastor Kevin Graves. Pastor Graves, welcome to the program.
Thank you. It's a pleasure being with you again. I hope you're doing well today.
Doing quite well. Excited about tonight's program with the Ward Five City Councilman and City Councilwoman candidates. And we're looking forward to this great debate on tonight. We got four distinguished guests who will be joining us shortly. And we'll be bringing them in one by one. So without delaying the four, we'll bring the guest on and then we'll go into prayer and get right into tonight's debate.
Okay, let's do it.
All right. Ms. Cockro, welcome to the program.
Oh, thank you so much for having me.
Absolutely. Thank you for joining, accepting the invitation, I should say. All right. Next up, we have Mr. Alan Willis. Welcome to the program, sir.
Thank you. Thank you for having me tonight.
Absolutely. All right. Next up, Ms. Tyisha, Todd Bell, Lindsay. She's got a long name. Welcome to the program.
Thank you for having me.
Thank you for accepting the invitation as well. And last up, we have the Reverend George Parks Jr. Welcome to the program.
Glad to be here. And I'd like to say to all the candidates, you know, I hope that, you know, we enjoy tonight's debate and I'm looking forward to debate with you all and the issues. And I wish all of us the best of luck because came with one person win and I'm just looking forward to having this debate tonight. Thank you.
Okay. All right. All right, guys. If you would, I'm gonna go ahead and mute. Well, I'll tell you what, you go ahead and mute your mics. That will save any feedback we have on the option. You should see where it says unmute. Just remember when I call upon you to unmute your mic. Pastor Graves, you can unmute yours because you're gonna get ready and open us up in prayer. Guys, if you would, we always start our program out in prayer. So while that, Pastor Graves, my co-host, start us out in prayer and we'll get started with tonight's program.
Heavenly Father, we thank you for this opportunity to come before you tonight. Lord, I pray that a spirit of resolution, a spirit of compassion, a spirit that has a mind to build will begin to emerge tonight, Lord. We thank you for what you're about to do in Meridian, Mississippi. And we cover with your precious blood every candidate that wants to run for public office. Lord, cover them from the crown of their head to the souls of their feet, govern their thinking, govern their decision-making and surround them with people who have a mind to build. We give you all the glory, honor, and praise. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Amen. Amen. Thank you so much. Guys, if you just now tuned in, I'm your host Investigator Parks. Tonight, we're having the Ward Five City Councilman Debate. That's for the city of Meridian. So if you know someone who lives in Ward Five who would love to be on this program or love to hear what the candidates has to say, please go ahead and share this live screen, tag someone in the comment section, you can section. You can post your comments or you can tag someone and that would send them an instant notification and let them know that we are on live. If you have any questions for the candidates, please submit your questions down below in the comment section. And if we have time, if time allows, we will try to get to some of your questions and comments. Just be mindful, no derogatory comments. If it's a candidate that's not of your choice, please be respectful to those candidates. Any derogatory comments or remarks would not be allowed on the program. Of course, I will dismiss them. With that being said, we're gonna go over the rules for the virtual debate on tonight real quickly, just a few rules and we'll get started with tonight's program. Pastor Graves and myself, we will share the moderator role and ask three questions apiece. Nor myself or Pastor Graves will do any fact checking, checking to any of the candidates. Candidates will have three minutes to give an introduction, opening statement. Also, candidates will have a minute and 30 seconds to respond to any questions that has been submitted. If a candidate goes over the allotted time, their mic will be muted after the next completed sentence after the time has expired. Also, candidates will exercise respect and hopefully not personally attack another candidate's or candidate's family member during the live screen or that candidate will be removed from the live screen. As I said in the mayor debate, I don't expect any of that tonight. We have a distinguished group of candidates and I believe all of them are very respectful in their capacity. So we don't expect any issues tonight. So we're gonna just go ahead and get started. Guys, again, thank you for joining the program. I see the viewers out there as well. Jim Marie, thank you for joining the program. And also Inspire Walker, thank you so much for joining the program. I look like a Cochran supporter. Also, Tristan Hampton, excuse me, thank you for joining the program. And guys, if you have comments or anything you'd like to say, please post them in the comment section. And let's get started with tonight's debate. I'm very excited. All right. And what we would do, guys, let me say this real quick. For the sake of time, we're just gonna do a quick order. Since we have Ms. Cockro up top, George down second, Ms. Ty third, and Mr. Alice fourth. That's the way we're gonna ask the questions. If any of you guys disagree, please let me know. I was a little unprepared. Normally, I will put your names in a cup and we would draw names, but if you guys don't have a problem going in that order. And basically, on the second question, I'll reverse and start with Mr. Willis and work my way up top. Third question, I'll start back at the top. Is that okay, guys?
No problem.
All right. Great. 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 Okay. V Law, she's watching as well. Thank you so much, V. If you know anybody living in Ward Five, please tell them to tune in. Or for that matter, anybody who's concerned about city government in Meridian, because come and join, there will be a new city councilman to represent Ward Five. All right, guys. Pastor Graves, you'll do the first three questions and I'll post a question up on the screen. You can read it out. Christian, you would go first. So go ahead and unmute your mic and get ready for question one.
I'm sorry, before we get started, did you want to do the three-minute intro that you said prior to or just going straight into it?
You know what? You know, I did the same thing in the mayor debate. Actually, I'm getting ahead of myself and I have my co-host who didn't remind me. You're absolutely right. You guys.
I'm just making sure we're on the same page.
Yeah, I gotta put responsibility on somebody. Yeah. No, you're absolutely right. It's in the rules. You guys got three minutes to do an introduction. Hey, I apologize. I'm so excited about this debate. I'm getting ahead of myself.
I missed it too, so I'm just as guilty.
Yeah, okay. Good deal. All right. So if you would, everybody else, mute your mic. Except Ms. Cockro, go ahead and start with your three-minute introduction and we'll go around to the next candidate.
I wanted to pack your three minutes up because I'm so excited about the debate. Hello, my name is Kristen Cockro and I am running for the seat of Ward Five City Council. Focusing on family, innovation, values, and excellence. Karen is about listening to you, understanding you, and standing up for you. And I pray that on April the sixth, you choose me, Ward Five, to be that voice for the city council. Thank y'all so much.
Wow, that was a quick three minutes there. Okay, she's ready to get into the program. Okay. All right. George, you're next up for your three minutes. Your time starts now.
Well, good afternoon to all candidates once again, and I wish all of us the same and the run. The reason I'm running for Ward Five City Council is one, Ward Five has been neglected in the last four years. And I think as councilmen, we should focus on the city of Meridian and not the Ward Five, but not only Ward Five. We have to remember that we represent the whole city of Meridian. So whatever decision that we make affected all the people. It's time that we start doing, not talking about, but be about it. Need to be able to, our infrastructure in our neighborhood, need to fix our roads, need to be done. And we are not. I don't feel the people really feel safe. We need cameras in different places. And I want to be able to be a councilman that people could be able to call. And once they saw the newspaper about the roads and that statement was made, call to your councilman. You know what road need to be paved. But my thing is, if you're a councilman in Ward Five, you need to know, you need to know your area. You need to know what road that need to be done. We still council sometimes. We become a councilman, then we get confused about our own personal agenda. But it's not about us. It's about the people of Meridian. You know, people are tired of not being represented properly. And that's why we're doing Ward Five. I thought that Ward Five is a big area. You know, so it's difficult to get out there. We need to know the people that we are serving. We need to understand that the people are important. There's a lot of issues in Meridian, but the roads, security, we need to bring more business. We need to work with our local leaders, our state leaders, and also our leader Washington to bring jobs to our area. And we just need to do better. You know, you cannot solve all the issues in the city of Meridian. But there are some important issues, the roads, security, and economic development in Meridian. We look at different side of town that is growing. Ward Five and Eighth Street is not growing. So we need to be a councilman that listen to the people. We need to be able to be on one call as a councilman. And even if the mayor brings something to the council, we need to listen, understand, and not vote because of our own personal need. And I feel like that I've been working at Houseville for four or two years. I serve people. I understand how to serve people. And, you know, and being a servant of people, of who we are, you know, we need to understand, we need to make sure that everybody, we need to go to our wars, we need to drive around. And we need to see what the people need. We need to talk to the people. It's tired of just talking. We talk about a lot of things, but we're not doing nothing. One of the worst roads that I see is in Ward Five. And it's a lot of roads over in Meridian that's bad. So we need to be a servant of the people. We need to stop talking about it. We need to be a, and once we elected, then we need to make sure that we talk before we do it. But we need to ensure when we get there, we need to be a customer for all the city of Ward Five on a portion of what we do. So whoever wins, look, I hope that I will support you 100% because it's not about me, it's about the city of Meridian. It's not about my agenda, it's about the city of Meridian. And I hope that I'll be there to support you, Ward Five, whoever you are. And I just want to be able to be a servant of the people. And let's not forget about who put is there. You know, and that's all I have to say. And one last thing is that we need to work with the mayor. And the mayor need to work with the councilman. Because the council control a lot of things. And we need to be sure that we be there for the people. And that's the main thing. Thank you.
Okay. All right. Okay, I think we lost Mr. Willis. He was next. We'll wait till he come back. In the meantime, we'll go down to Ms. Lindsay. If you would, unmute your mic and get ready to do your three-minute introduction. Again, welcome to the program.
Hi. Hello, everyone. Thank you for having me. My name is Tyisha Todd Bell Lindsay. I was born and raised here, right here in Meridian, Mississippi. I was, got my start at St. Patrick's, went to Carver KG Meridian High. And I left off to college, even studied abroad in London, England, and lived all over the world as being a flight attendant or working managerial jobs from Disney World in Orlando or USDA in St. Louis and Chicago and American Girl Place. I worked at American Girl Place. So being a flight attendant and living in so many different areas, I came back and remarried to my wonderful husband. And I have a beautiful three-year-old daughter. And I felt I wanted to do something more for my daughter as well as my family and my friends that do live here in Meridian, Mississippi. So it was important to me to want to give back and to fix some of the things that I feel like needs to be improved. Some of those things could be paving the road or getting streetlights or things like that for our neighbors. Or focusing on, I live in a historic district of Poplar Springs, and so focused on maybe localizing that historically here in Meridian. It could be things as getting more job opportunities, because I was fortunate to be able to come back. And I was a sales manager as well as here at a hotel. And then I soon became the Assistant General Manager at Hype. I resigned literally three days after realizing that this is what I'm gonna do. And so hype is behind me. And unfortunately, you know, I still work with them if they need anything. But it's important for me to be a servant to our city. Being a servant on the airplanes, I've been serving in all the jobs that I work at. I feel like I contribute that to the city council. And anything that the people need, I am definitely going to be an ear and a voice for those people. They fight for whatever they need in my ward and in the city. Is more jobs, that's been a concern. That's one of my concerns. Education, bringing more platforms such as STEM, science, technology, engineering, math, maybe aviation, a few other things. We also probably definitely need lower crime. That's also on the platform. Working with this police department and bringing up more neighborhood watch. Whatever that the citizen need in this town, I definitely want to be a voice and fight for them and make sure that we all have a great quality of life.
Okay. Hey, somebody's got a timer. Good job. Good job. You did a great job with that. I did, I spoke with Mr. Willis and he lost his feed. So he should be joining us shortly. If not, we'll go ahead and get started with tonight's questions. Inspire, I do see your question. If we have time, we will get to that question. So in the meantime, let's get to the questions already that was submitted. And let me remind the viewers, those on YouTube, Facebook, and StreamYard, that these questions were submitted by people who live in Ward Five. I sent out a post and some of the questions was submitted through my inbox. Another one was sent through a text message. So these are questions that were submitted by constituents in your ward. So let's get started with that. And Pastor Graves, you'll have the first three questions and I'll post question one up for Ms. Cockro.
Okay. Ms. Cockro, good evening. First question is, do you feel Ward Five has been neglected over the last four years? If so, how do you plan to fix it? She's muted.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. I'm doing what I'm supposed to ask. And Ward Five is the biggest ward in the city. And I live in the Poplar Springs area. So with that being said, Ward Five, Poplar Springs area being neglected, I don't feel so. Over on my street, if we see trash out, we pick it up. It's a neighborhood over this way. I have friends who live out in Willow Ridge. And so they have not said anything to make me think that Ward Five has not been successful. We have installed police lights. The only thing I would say that I would like to see in Ward Five would be the speed humps, of course. That is something that the council has to vote on. But as far as Ward Five being neglected, as of now, I do not see anything. I believe that we take pride in Ward Five.
Thank you. The second question is for which candidate? Candidate Lindsay, good evening.
Good evening.
The question is the same. Do you feel Ward Five has been neglected over the last four years? If so, how do you plan to fix it?
I actually don't, do not feel that it has been neglected. I do feel that it definitely need to be more improvements. A lot of people feel there's still things that needs to be done, such as more cameras, maybe streetlights. That's been important to the people. Houses that probably need to be, that's unkelt, they need to be fixed and things like that are tore down. And just kind of like some of the neighbors, maybe their home don't look to par. And so it would be important that we come together as a community to make sure that everybody, you know, property is pretty much kept, especially if it's been burnt down, maybe the house been burned down or something like that. It's important that the city will, you know, try to contribute and to help in maybe their house gone ahead, either fix it up or tear, you know, you know, tear it down or something like that. I knock on the doors and I get people that even want those signs that say, you know, slow down, children are playing here. So I don't think it is not neglected. It's just that it's a few things that, you know, it's room for improvement. And so they just want to be heard on any situations that they have or any concerns that they have. And I think it'd be important that someone like me that is prepared to be just, you know, focused on being the councilwoman, that I could be that voice for all the concerns here in Meridian and our ward.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Kennedy Parks, how are you?
Doing good. Doing good.
Excellent. Do you feel Ward Five has been neglected over the last four years? If so, how do you plan to fix it?
I do. If you look at the roads, number one, on Constitution Avenue, right front of the Houseville, Houseville South, over by Rush Hospital. Look at those roads. If you look at downtown, you look at 22nd Avenue, if you look on Red Line over there on 16th and 20th Fifth Avenue, the roads are bad in Ward Five. I think, you know, to be able to fix those things, we need to be able to be sure that we, you know, as a councilman, to know our wars once again and make sure that our roads in our ward of five, people cars have been out of line because the road not fixed. I think as one that can mention about Poplar Springs Drive, yeah, Poplar Springs Drive, back in the area, that area is really well kept. But the area over here downtown, closer to Red Line, different other areas, they're not well kept. And I think that we need to make sure that we work together to make sure that, like I said, cameras in certain neighborhoods, that people been taking about with crimes is up. And I think we need to make sure that we work together as a council to get those things fixed. We don't have policemen are not making rounds in those neighborhoods. A lot of people feel unsafe in the neighborhood. And the main issue to me, look at Eighth Street for a minute. If you look at Eighth Street, look at North Hill area and look at over by the mall area. Eighth Street does not have any, it's dead down there. And we need to make sure that we bring things for all the citizens to enjoy. And I believe fix the problem is, is pay attention to our wars, pay attention and listen to our citizens in the real. And be sure that we have councilman fix that. And I feel Ward Five been neglected because the last, the council, the last person in Ward Five is, is that, you know, has not really supported Ward Five like Ward Five should be supported. And I think it has been neglected. If I'm a councilman, I will listen to people, I will talk to the mayor, and I'll make sure that we can't fix everything one time. Let's understand that. But at least we need to look at things that need to be fixed. These roads out front of the hospital have been there like two or three years. If you come across, you see how bad they are. Over by Rush Hospital and Ward Five has, to me, in my opinion, has some of the worst roads it is in the city of Meridian. And I will do everything I can to be sure that I'll get that fixed by being, have an ear for, to hear what the citizens want to be and be sure that we as councilmen cooperate with each other at council. Ward Five is one ward. We got four other wards beside Ward Five. When you come together and make sure that these things fix. One last thing, the mayor had an announcement that on Eighth Street from, from the 10th, the 19th is gonna be paved by the water. Well, that's fine as well. But what about neighborhoods? That need to be fixed. If I'm a councilman, I'll make sure that it get done, you know, at some point. It need to be done. More cameras and thank you.
Thank you, sir.
All right, Pastor Graves, let me interrupt real quick. Since Mr. Willis was unable to do his three-minute introduction due to his fee, Mr. Willis, you have three minutes to go ahead and formally introduce yourself and then we'll ask you the same questions we asked other candidates after you finish your introduction.
Thank you, guys. It's a joy to be with you guys. I'm excited. I've been here for all my life, all of my adult life. I've been here in Meridian. I spent 30 years as a firefighter. I had four years as a reserve officer and four years as a sheriff department reserve. I made sure that I put myself in position so that I could make a difference. If you're not at the table, you cannot make a difference. I've been at the table. I've made the differences in Meridian, in this community. And I like, I would like your support to help me make a difference for you guys. I love this city. I live here and I love it. I know the condition of the city. It's not very hard to see. When my kids come home, they said, Dad, what is happening to the city? Well, what is happening to the city is that a strategic plan we don't have. I'm gonna be there to have a strategic plan and communications. If you can't communicate with the other councilman and the mayor, whomever that is, there's gonna be a problem. I knew my part as Ward Five councilman to be able to communicate with the council people and the mayor. I can assure you, we will come to a solution as to whatever we have going on in this city. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
All right, Pastor, you can go with the same question for Mr. Willis, please.
Yes. Candidate Alan Willis, the question is, do you feel Ward Five has been neglected over the last four years? If so, how do you plan to fix it?
Yes, I know it has been. I live here daily. I travel around the city. I'm constantly out among the people of this community. And I see the blight. We, we made sure that we, we thought we had a strategic plan that we were gonna make sure that those houses that are abandoned, that are dilapidated, that we were gonna take care of them. Well, that eight years ago, it didn't happen. We hired a person. That person didn't last long, so it still didn't happen. If I'm elected Ward Five Councilman, I'm gonna make sure that we have a strategic plan. In two years, we're gonna see where we are. And for years, we ought to be on the game. And I'm not gonna wait until the fourth year to get started. Because right now, you're seeing a lot of things change, a lot of things being done. Are those things being done that we could have done two years ago and been as effective as we are right now? I see so much work going on in this community right now that I've never seen. A positive Meridian is a Meridian where you're consistently doing things all the time. If I'm elected, I'm gonna make sure that I work with the mayor and the council, that we will be the kind of Meridian always that you see today. Not just for now, but always and continue to empower our people to improve their homes. We need businesses. We're gonna have to make sure that the businesses that are here now, that we give them incentives to stay here. And make sure that if they want to develop their business, and the further we can do so, the new businesses coming in, the first thing we gotta do is make sure that we have our industrial park ready. If it's not ready, we're not gonna get the businesses that we're supposed to and our school system. Make sure that it's ready. If we have a school, I think the school system is very important. Think from this perspective. If the school is not working, if things are not working properly, this is almost like a car. If your car is not working, what are you gonna do? Are you gonna keep the old car and keep fixing and fixing and fixing? Are you gonna make some changes? Let's do what we can do to help our children. And if we do that, we're gonna see our, I ask you one question, Google this, and how are the children? Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
All right. Before we go to question two, candidates, just be mindful, we have been on the program almost 30 minutes. So we don't wanna, we still got five more questions to get to. We don't want to bore any of our viewers out. They're so excited to hear what you guys have to say. So let's try to stay within that timeframe. I didn't mute any mics this time because I know we had some technical issues and I want to make sure Mr. Willis get his introduction in. So on the remaining. in. So uh on the remaining questions, uh you'll have a minute and thirty seconds to respond. Uh please try to stay within that timeframe. That way with the program can run smoothly, and we can get to some of the the uh the comments and questions from the viewers. All right, uh we'll go to question two, and Pastor Graves, I'll give you the mic back, and you can start it out this time with Ms. Lindsay.
Ms. Lindsay, what are your views on ethical conduct for candidates holding elected positions?
My views on that is, if you're gonna hold a position, you are putting yourself as a leader. You have to be ethical. You have to have morals. You have to have respect. You have to, I'm a Christian, so I hold myself accountable. Well, you know, I I God, what what is the best way of of doing the things that he has shined upon you to do? You walk in his path. If you're not doing things as ethical, or you doing corrupt things or anything like that, then um it's 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 not wanted. It's not um of anybody that should be in leadership in this city. You absolutely have to hold yourself accountable, because the citizens is holding them accountable. So if it was me, definitely morals is very important and values to me, my family, my friends, and um definitely um morals is 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 top notch with me.
Thank you.
All right, next question, Mr. Willis. Go ahead, Pastor.
Mr. Willis, what are your views on ethical conduct for candidates holding elected positions? He, oh, he's muted. He didn't hear it.
Uh actually, I think he's froze. Um
Yeah.
Okay, all right, uh we'll we'll get back to Mr. Willis uh shortly. Uh we'll go to uh Mr. Parks. And uh same question, Mr. Parks, uh go ahead, Pastor.
Yes, Mr. Parks, uh what are your views on ethical conduct for candidates holding elected positions?
Well, we we check at the conduct because we're in the public. And you know, we we are around, you know, we're in the public for one thing. Second, oh, you you must carry yourself in the right way. You can't go and do anything. You you know, you can't go behind the back, have a meeting with with some of the people, the busy people in Meridian without having a uh meet with the whole council. We got to be able to, as being a mayor, a police officer, wherever that we're here, we got to be have the conduct uh of being uh can't do anything that everybody has to do. You you got to walk upright, you know, vows and let the work I done speak for me. You have to be that had the right conduct in order to be a a a councilman. It just councilman is not something that you go and just do uh for play. You you got to hold yourself in best moral and and conduct that you can. Being moral, being hold yourself up, dress poppin' when you come to the meeting, uh you know, and just be the person that you want to be. People people looks at at you as being a leader in the city of Meridian. You can't go do anything. You can't take money from somebody else. If somebody want a favor, if somebody want want something done in the city of Meridian, you can't do that because that is your job is to serve the people, not serve individual. And we must be able to stand up and and do the right thing that we can for City of Meridian. It's all about the person that you are, it's all about the job that you are hired to do. We got to stand up and and be had the right moral conduct and and because people are looking at us. We sit behind council, we can't, we got to make sure that we stay the right discreet. We gotta make sure that that we watch what we say on social media. You have to be careful. Although you can always say everything that you think, okay, even though I think a lot of things, but you have to be careful what you say. You have to be careful what you do on social media, because people are looking at you. People are holding you accountable for the job that you do in City of Meridian. That's who you're elected for, to have the right conduct and moral character. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. What are your views on ethical conduct for candidates holding elected positions?
Kristen. So, okay, so um I've jotted down some notes. So when I first think about it, you think of someone of a great stature. Um one person that will be able to handle business at the same time, be able to reach the community. We don't want someone that does strict business and have no interaction with the community. So that has to do with a a lot. Uh accountability, we have to be accountable for the actions, the way we speak, and the way we carry ourselves at all times. And also having a heart for the people. If if we don't have a heart for the people, then we're here for the wrong reasons. Uh I'm an interventionist in a local school. So already, a lot of these things that I have said, I carry out every day, um being a role model to the children, here for the children every single day. So it's very important that the next city councilperson be able to relate to anyone, no matter what political parties they're affiliated with.
Thank you, Ms. Cockrell.
All right, Pastor, uh we're gonna, we're not gonna skip the next question three. We're actually gonna go to the question that was submitted by a lot of you, Inspire Walker, and we'll let this be question three here. And um and then we'll go to question four once um after all the candidates answer question three. So if you would, uh Pastor, that'd be question three for all the candidates there, and we'll go from top to bottom. We'll start out with Ms. Cockrell and work our way down.
Okay.
I'm a part of so much stuff. I was trying to write it down. Um I have joined Dream Team.
Yeah, Pastor Pastor Graves, if you would, read the question four, please.
Yes, uh the question needs to be, I don't see it.
Okay, uh it's actually, I posted on the screen. I'm sorry. Maybe you don't see it on your end. All right, question from uh question three candidates from Inspire Walker. Uh what is, what is it that you have already done and already is doing for our city and people? Things that you have been doing for at least a year or more? Question three.
Okay, so before I was an interventionist, I was the disaster program specialist for Meridian um American Red Cross. So if that was the disaster here in Meridian, I was the person, no matter two or three o'clock in the morning, I was that person on call. After this office went to an all volunteer office, um I could not work for free, unfortunately. So um I still volunteer for American Red Cross. That's how I ended up in the school system. I've joined Dream Team of the South. Um I moved, I've joined Inspire. I'm also a representative of Dream Team of the South. I am a Girl Scout troop leader for troop forty-one twenty-seven. We just ended our cookie sales. I also recently joined the NAACP to be able to give that young voice um a sound. Um another thing that I have done, um this lady and I, Miss Tony Christopher, she and I are working on a mentorship program that's hopefully going to kick off this summer. I hope she doesn't mind me saying. But we're gonna be targeting girls from the age of six to thirteen. Um hopefully, if possible, we get the funding free for the girls. And uh we are going to be mentoring them Monday through Thursday, and then on Friday, we will take the skills that we have learned, and we will take the girls off um to do different activities to put those things in effectiveness. So many times we um take from the community, but we don't give back from the culture, uh excuse me, from the culture. So we're just trying to deposit happy nuggets into the girls' lives so that they can know that they are special. Um everyone doesn't sign up for Girl Scout, unfortunately. So we wanna try to meet those girls in the middle to hopefully make a better society for our children. Um I am everywhere in church, the choir, usher, whatever the preacher says, do I do, I obey.
Thank you so much.
Yes.
Uh you can, uh the next question will be for uh uh Mr. Willis, uh and I'll leave the question on the screen.
Okay. Mr. Willis, what is it that you have already done and already doing for our city and people? For example, things that you have been doing for at least a year or more?
Yes, for the last year past, before COVID, I'm a golf instructor, and I teach golf to youth. We had a program called The First Tee. We brought about, uh seven years ago, we brought that program into Meridian, and due to things changing, our environment changing, and the facility changed, we were not able to continue The First Tee chapter. So we decided to continue with our Meridian junior golf. That's what I've been involved with. Our kids need another outlet. You're only given uh baseball, softball, and basketball. Why not soccer? Why not golf? Why not tennis? We need to empower our kids to do something more. If you really wanna get involved with the people, you got to network. That is your networking way of getting things done. That's to getting us away from where they are now and putting them into the real world. Networking is the key. And I feel that through golf, the the something that I really love, that I'm making a difference with in our community, I feel like we're making a difference, and our kids are working. We have doctors, engineers, things of that nature that's come out of the golf program since I was there. I spent seven years coaching golf at Meridian High. I wanted to make sure that I made a difference with those kids. I am those differences. Respect, confidence, those things are something that our children must have. And in most sports, we don't spend enough time doing those things. We're spending more time, but after this sport happens, that's where we lose our children. And I want, when I have this program that we have, it's very important that we have parental involvement. Most of the time, our real problems are with the fact that we don't give the parents enough involvement. They don't take themselves, they don't put themselves into the game. Well, in golf, it's a requirement that, hey, bring your parent to the table so they can help teach, they can know your child is doing. I'm just not out there teaching them golf. You know exactly what's happening, and you're gonna be a part of the game with them. It's a game of life. If you have problems seeing the ball, you're not gonna hit that well. If you don't get, you're not gonna be able to hit it. Life is like golf. It's hard. But all we gotta do is hold our children and our community responsible. Everybody has a responsibility to this community, our children and the parents. The parents are the parents of the children. So you gotta take care of your children. Well, that's what I've done. I make sure that I involve the parents with our program. It's a successful program. It's something that people really enjoy doing. We take our children to events and make, to make sure that they're involved with all the people. We're not gonna let them be downplayed. They're they're gonna see the people who's gonna be the movers and shakers in this community and this country. That's what I wanna do with those kids, and I'm involved with my church. I'm a member of New Prospect Missionary Baptist Church, and I love it. And I welcome you to come anytime you would like to, and some of your lis- listeners know that. Uh I wanna do what I can for Ward Five. I'm gonna be there for you. I'm not gonna be, matter of fact, I'm gonna tell you this too, while while I have opportunity, I'm not gonna be a
Thank you, sir.
All right, uh next up will be Mr. George Park.
I'm gonna be full time. I'm gonna do that for you. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Parks.
Uh.
That you've been, what is it that you have already done and already doing for our city and people? For example, things that you have been doing for at least a year or more?
Well, one of the things, I was the house builder, and I uh worked with the sick, and I've been, you know, uh been minister to the sick. But the second thing I've been doing, I've been uh talked to a lot of homeless people in the region, trying to minister them as well, and stop and give them some money, get something to eat. Sometimes we forget about uh the people like the homeless people who don't have nowhere to go. So I tried to go and talk to them, let them know about the Lord, that God still loves them, and also give them something, you know, to eat. We should never forget about the least, the least less of us that who don't have anything, who don't have as much. And that's a part of me wanting to be a council, because I wanna make sure that the people that, especially the homeless, that we can, you know, we can work with the others uh groups to separate the armed different ones, and get them someone staying something to eat. And that's very important to me to be able to minister to the to the homeless and mentor with those who's hungry. You know, I've been a minister myself, you understand? We have to be able to go out. You know, Jesus said to his disciples once, he said, how can you say you love me, you know, who you have not seen, you know, but you can't lo- love your your people every day. So that's what we need to do. We need to love uh our brothers. And like I said, being a councilman, you know, I want to make sure that continue to, even if I'm not elected councilman, I'm gonna make sure that I'm gonna start getting be being more involved in city government, because I want to see the city of Meridian thrive. I want to see, like I said, like that Mr. Willis said, somebody our children, our youth is have gone to scrap. Our youth has has gone wise. We need to make sure that we take time, bring our youth in, and make time to that that that. And that's what I'm gonna do, you know, and homes are important in our city of Meridian. And that's what I plan to do with the local government. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
All right, uh last up for question three will be uh Ty Lindsey. If you would, unmute your mic, Pastor Graves, uh questions on your screen.
Ms. Lindsay, what is it that you have already done and already doing for our city and people? Again, for example, things that you have been doing for at least a year or more?
Okay, um, okay, where to list start? I would say um s- um to start with a list, um one of the things I did is I am a ordering VC store. I started my chapter. We love giving back to from fee by faith, so doing stuff for uh Carol Lodge. And with me being the founder and the leader of that organization, I kinda do, love doing things with uh my other sisters and um kinda lead them into doing different, uh giving back to the community. I also wrote a children's book, um Anala and the CLB Kids. I worked actively with St. Patrick's Elementary Schools since I went to school there. And um I had a website, which was similar like Facebook, but for kids and um chat room and all that. So when it was up and running, I would go to St. Patrick's, and they, those kids were actually getting it on my site, and they could meet and chat with other people, other kids from around the world. And um I also wrote a book, Anala and the CLB Kids, uh the book, the website, all that went hand in hand to really just kinda um it's a children's brand, and it teaches different cultures, uh foreign language, and entrepreneurship skills at a young age. It's like a preteen book. I'm very active at my daughter's school. She go to New Destiny, and I am part of uh before COVID, I was very active with uh PPS, which is Parents Promote Success. Um again, I mentioned I was assistant general manager at height, and that wasn't just a manager job. I was mentoring a lot of those kids that, you know, I hire. Like I did all the um hiring, um from painting to laser tag room, to setting things up, to really branding it, and getting the uh getting it style. And so a lot of those high school kids, they kinda looked up to me and uh Miss Ty and things like that. And um try, I loved working with them. I'm very active in my church. Um if Freedom Rock do need me, I'm available, but I am a member of St. Joseph Catholic Church. And they would have things such as Oktoberfest, and I would do that as well, try to organize it. And that was before COVID. And um I'm that girl that usually people call on when they need something like right now, um just trying to help with the Meridian High School, how they say your prom and things like that. Um I did uh was a graduate from Leadership Lauderdale two thousand eighteen, so I did a lot of with that rail. So my time is up.
Thank you, Mrs. Lindsay.
You're welcome.
Uh it's perfectly fine, guys. Uh we're so far, we're moving pretty smoothly. Uh at this point, we're halfway through the questions. We have three more questions left, so uh we're gonna take just a quick break, either grab some coffee or make a quick run to the other room. Uh you got about a minute to do so. Uh viewers, again, you're watching Parks Investigator Live. I'm your host, Investigator Parks. Uh we are speaking with Ward Five city councilmen, or in city council, uh possible city councilwomen, councilwomen. Uh I just screwed that all up. But anyway, we're talking to Ward Five candidates. So with that being said, stand by for a minute. We'll be back on with the candidates uh uh for more questions. All right, guys, uh we're back after a quick break. Uh I'll be waiting on again by my co-host. Oh, wait a minute, he he just turned his camera feedback on. Uh Pastor Graves, uh my co-host, uh on Parks Investigator Live, we have uh four Uh, Pastor Graves, uh, my co-host, uh, on Parks Investigator Live, we have, uh, four of the candidates for Ward Five, uh, City Councilman and Councilwoman. Uh, while ago, I just wanted, so many women, excuse me, it's two women in the race. So I want to put, I want to make it plural and say Councilwomen, that's wait a minute, that didn't sound right. So, uh, forgive me for that. I jacked that all up. But anyway, uh, nonetheless, uh, four distinguished guests on tonight and, uh, so far, so good. Uh, they, they all answered the, uh, the questions so far, I think to the best of their abilities. Uh, we have three more questions left and before we get to question four, I just want to acknowledge the viewers. I see all you guys, uh, thank you so much for joining in the live. I see a lot of live viewers on the Facebook side as well as YouTube. Uh, I see a lot of shares, uh, V Law Inspire, uh, Brian McCary, thank you so much. Mr. Roger Wilson, I see you. Thank you, guys. Uh, Mr. Lindsey, I see your question. Hopefully we can get to it. And, uh, uh, Emmy, uh, Emmy, I see you as well. And, uh, Don King, thank you for your comment. So guys, uh, thank you for tuning in. We're going to jump right back into question four. We're going to bring the candidates back on, uh, and we'll get right into question four. So Pastor Graves, you ready for this second round?
Yes, sir.
All right, all right, let's get to question four and I'll post it on the screen and we'll go from my right. Uh, and it'd be Ms. Cockro again, so if you would, unmute your mic and get ready for question four. All right, here we go. What qualifications or experiences do you have to make, to make you the best choice for City Councilman or Councilwoman?
Can you hear me?
Yeah, yes.
Okay, so the qualifications I have, uh, when I worked for American Red Cross, I was over the disaster department. Um, I'm not saying that Meridian is a disaster by all means, but I am saying I do understand the protocol it comes to with having to deal with state officials, having to deal with government officials coming in. Uh, one thing I would like to see is bringing in more funding from the government to, um, help our balance, our, our salary, um, as a whole. And also I have experience, um, with management, classroom management, being an educator. Um, I'm able to listen to the parents speak. I am able to listen to my superiors when they say, this is what we need to do. So it's all about that communication factor that I am willing to put in. It's all about that understanding what the people need, what the city needs and what everyone needs to accommodate. To make Meridian the best city that we can be. Um, I also have experienced, motherhood teaches everyone how to definitely balance different things at different times. Being able to multitask to get things done.
All right, so much for that question there. Uh, I'm going to leave the question up, we'll go down to Mr. Willis. Uh, remember you have a minute and 30 seconds to, uh, respond to this question. And do you need me to read the question again, sir? All right, what qualifications or experience, experiences do you have to make you the best choice for City Councilman?
I've always been very concerned about our community. This is one reason I spent so much time devoted to public safety related causes. No one can deny that we really have a crime problem in Meridian. Well, I made sure that I have the, been involved with law enforcement and the fire departments throughout my career. Even as a civilian, I was on the 911 commission. I've been very active in what goes on in the city of Meridian. Uh, and when you get inside of these board meetings, they allow you to get at the table. When you're at the table, you can make a difference. You cannot make a difference in Meridian if you're not at the table. Yes, it's important that we teach our children how to empower themselves. But we can't empower anyone if we're not at the table. That's one of the problems that we have right now. The people that should be at the table, they're not there. They're not representing us properly. They don't have communication skills. Can they communicate with the people that they're going to have to deal with? I can do that. That's what I do. I'm going to make it a priority that we make sure that all of our police officers in this community, that they are certified. They are, they are, they are going to be certified, but they have to be accredited. When they are accredited, you're going to see a difference in what happens. The sheriff department is different, it's because they are accredited. That means there are things that they do to make sure that you have checks and balances. That's why I know this because I was on the 911 commission and I made sure that we participate. We need to make sure that we fund these commissions. We need to make sure that we fund law enforcement. If we don't do those things, we're going to have a problem and you can see that now.
All right, thank you so, thank you so much for that question, sir. All right, uh.
Elias.
Yes, go ahead, sir.
Hi, I'm so sorry to interrupt you. One of the viewers brought up a question regarding crime prevention. Uh, time permitting, uh, that would be a good question to ask unless that's one of the remaining questions.
Sure, sure, sure. Save that, save that question. And, uh, once we get through with this question, we'll kind of touch on it if we have time. Uh, so definitely write that question out, I'll put it to the side there. All right, George, you're next up, uh, if you would, unmute your mic. Um, okay, all right, and I'll put the question back up on the screen for you as well. Uh, and it reads as follows, what qualifications or experiences do you have to make you the best choice for City Councilman?
Well, for one thing, I believe, I've been working on my job for two years. I understand how to deal with people. Uh, I understand about business. I understand what our city needs. And I think the biggest thing, whatever we do, to be a candidate for the city council, you must understand what your city needs. And I, I feel like being a Meridian all my life, been, been driving around the city of Meridian, I see what our city needs. And that's one of the things that we got to understand, to be qualified, to understand what your city need, understand about business. Understand that we need to make sure that the people are represented by. And I want to bring to the table the understanding of, of what I, like I said, what people need, what our city needs. Uh, understand about crime, we need to understand that about our roads, we need to understand what the people need. And I think that's the important thing. I mean, I see right now, we have some good candidates on here and I enjoy, but I've been enjoying all of them. But we just need to make sure whoever is elected, you got to make sure that you, you bring, what you bring to the table and make sure that you know what the people want and what the city need. And be able to work with the mayor and, and the rest of council to make Meridian the best city we can. Our city is wonderful and, and I believe that I can help enhance our city and enhance the community that we live in. Thank you.
All right, thank you so much for that, uh, staying within that timeframe as well. Um, we'll go to, uh, Ms. Lindsey, you're, you're last up for question four. I'll put it back on the screen for you and I'll read it for you as well. Uh, let me shut this timer off so you won't think it's your turn. All right, there we go. All right, question four, what qualifications or experiences do you have to make you the best choice for City Councilwoman?
Sorry, oh, a lot of things that makes me a good fit to be the councilwoman. One, I have to start even from my background, um, being a flight attendant. I have worked with all type, my coworkers of the flight attendants, all people from all walks of life, from Chile, just name a country. And, um, and also working, so I could work with anybody. That's a good thing. It doesn't matter where you come from or where your background, I could work with any person. Um, I am, uh, currently with administration, with, uh, um, being on the civil service. So I kind of, uh, have that part in, uh, government, uh, uh, ties. Um, and even being a manager at Hype or a manager at Disney or manager at American Girl. We talking about, uh, marketing and, um, managing from different type of, uh, aspects. There's a $36 million budget here and I am very good when it comes to the money. It would be important to me to treat, um, the city of Meridian like I would, you know, treat it like it's my own. I will make sure that the, um, the citizens get exactly what they need and, um, won't waste any money. So having an entrepreneurial background, my husband and I both have a, uh, we have a business together. I've done several different businesses. We're true entrepreneurs and I could bring that to the table as well. I mentioned Hype before and it is very unfortunate things that have occurred, uh, since my, uh, since I have left. I'm very passionate about making that such an amazing place for the community and I put 50, 60 hours in. Um, what I'm hearing in the news is it has sat in my heart. But I am one of those people when I'm there, uh, we didn't hear all the gang related, uh, any of that stuff. It was a very wonderful place for everybody to come and enjoy. And I believe that I want to bring that to the table where everybody could want to come to Meridian and enjoy. Not just the tourists, but also the people want to live here. They want to come back and be a part of Meridian. So I, I have my ways of bringing different people together and working well with everyone.
All right, all right, thank you so much for that. Um, uh, communication is everything for everyone. Thank you so much, Emmy, that is true. Guys, uh, I want to show you my, my, my special little puppy. I've been trying to hide her all evening and, uh, she, she, she seemed to, uh, came, got under my seat and she wants some attention, guys. So y'all just say hello to Chloe, uh, isn't she beautiful? So, she's the CKC registered boss. And, uh, hopefully she'll, she'll just stop, you know, talk while I'm on live. All right, guys, uh, thank you so much for your questions so far, or your answers to the questions, I should say. And, uh, thank you for your response, viewers, uh, thank you for your comments. We have one more question, but before we get to the last question, Pastor Graves brought up a very important issue, uh, of a comment someone made. And, uh, I'll have to scroll back, I got several comments, but Pastor Graves, go ahead, uh, and mention what you want to talk about, sir.
Yes, uh, I don't recall the question that the viewer had posted, but I'm, I'm just going to put it into my own words. And this would be for one of the candidates. If elected, what strategy will you implement to address crime? If elected, what strategy will you implement to address crime?
Now I'm going to let you guys freestyle, unmute your mics, whoever want to respond, go first, go ahead.
I, I got, I'm going first if I'm on. Uh, I think first thing is to make sure. I think the first thing we need to do is make sure that we, uh, have more policemen, you know, to be able, you know, to patrol streets. Uh, and to make sure the policeman is patrol streak. I have seen several cases where I've seen some two or three in the corner talking, you know, sitting around talking. But we need to make more qualified policemen, you know, to, to patrol our city. Second, I would make sure we have cameras in, 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 in particular places, all those city of Meridian, not in certain places. And, and second, I would make sure that we have some accountability and to the police officer doing their job. Because right now, I've been over here, you don't see, uh, policemen patrol, uh, the city that much anymore, not our neighborhoods. You know, more policemen, uh, more cameras, you know, uh, instead of, uh, talk about, be about, y'all understand what happened to the, uh, the shooting that happened at the Koha. You know, assuming that shouldn't happen, boom, camera popped out of Meridian. We need, we, we need to be proactive, then reactive. We always react to after something happened. We didn't make sure that we do more now before something. That to me is the more.
All right, Ms. Cockro. Yeah, Cornelius, uh, let, let me give the mayor some, uh, some love. Uh, let me rephrase that question. If elected, in conjunction with the mayor's office, uh, I just want to make that clear as well. In conjunction with the mayor's office, uh, what strategy, uh, would you implement to address crime? Ms. Cockro?
All righty, so, um, if you all remember the Dare Program we used to have in school, we should bring the Dare Program back. Meaning that the police office that we do have will also be, um, present within the school. And also I've been saying for a while that until we stop bringing in eight dollar, nine dollar jobs for parents to, um, you get paid eight dollars an hour, which means the parents have to get two to three jobs to uphold the household. Um, and they don't have insurance. So we definitely need to see about bringing in better paying jobs that offer in insurance for families so that the parents can be, uh, in home with the child more often. And that will prevent crime because when the parent is more present, then it's less, it's less than to have crime. So we need to think about bringing in big city, big city businesses into Meridian to make parents be at home. Therefore, parents will be able to be active in children's life and we will see a decrease in crime. Also with the Dare Program, we can definitely bring the Dare Program back. And we need feedback from the community. What do you think will work? We need to try things out. So many times we say, I want this, I want that, but we don't get the, uh, the feedback. So we need to sit down and I would love to see Ward Five, which I thought about making. I would love to see Ward Five have a Facebook page and all of your concerns, all of your questions, and we'll be able to answer them then. So hopefully when I'm elected, I will start that Facebook page so we can come together as a community so that I can know what exactly you guys want, so I can implement it. But we do have to do something about crime. I'm all for it. If I have to get out there and hold hands, I think go by y'all every night, every street, I would want to do that just because Meridian has so much potential. And I see it, I feel it.
Thank you.
All right, uh, we'll let Ty go up next.
Okay, um, what was the question again? Out of the street and eyes between, uh, with the police.
If you're in conjunction with the mayor's office, what strategy would you implement to address crime?
Some of the strategies that I'm actually already working with the, uh, current, uh, chief of police. I just happened to ask, um, him that why don't we do some type of platform where we can, the community could interact? Will the police officers maybe doing things like, uh, dancing or doing something fun? Well, we get to know our police officer and they get to know us. They'll say, you know, hi, Mr. Graves. And then you could say, hey, Officer Jack, or just saying for example, well, we can really interact. Maybe the police officer could do more things such as, uh, um, meals on wheels and having a higher, uh, uh, better neighborhood watch, like maybe virtual, uh, neighborhood watch. As well as, uh, getting the elderly involved. They want to be involved and they're sitting at home anyway. Maybe they, you know, saying, go to Mrs. uh, Mrs. Jackson, have you seen anything? And, you know, and then that's a way of checking on them to see if they okay. While they, they may be at home and they don't have no family or something like that. So we could check on in and that gives them a, a purpose to really want to watch our community and we all work together. And, um, got, um, to bringing back the Dare Program, that will be good. I do know they have, uh, Dare is Drug Abuse Resistant Education, uh, where the officers was coming into the schools. I do know they have rebooted the Explore Program where you may want to, uh, learn how to be a police officer or firefighter or those different things. So just having more programs, more mentoring where the, uh, police officers are like a mentor, like, oh, my best friend wears blue or something like that. It's just something kind of catchy where they feel more, the community, especially younger kids feel more comfortable with the police. And then they won't do some of the bad things because they have someone that they are looking up to and just getting the, uh, the police. And I know more vetting, that would be good, getting them, uh, better pay. And, um, also more trained and getting more on the force. So, and, um, and have them, uh, we appreciate them and we want them to really put all in for our community to make sure that we're safe.
Thank you. Mr. Willis.
Yes, sir.
Give you the question again, sir.
Uh, I've been involved with the police department and fire department, mostly the police department. And I know what their problems are. First of all, in Meridian, we have a retention problem. We have a manpower problem. Anytime you have a retention problem and a manpower problem, you're not going to be able to do what is expected of you. Accreditation brings respect. Everything makes, comes to accountability. When you hold people accountable, you're going to make sure that they're doing their job. And when you do your job, I'm going to make sure that I make sure that you get paid properly. One of the things that we do wrong in Meridian is we have a pay scale for the police officers that are just like the pay scales for everybody else in the city. That's not appropriate. Police and firefighters should have a different pay scale. They have a different source of accountability for the city. They are the city. So, yes, we have time for them to get out into the community, but until you have enough officers, until they are credited, you don't have enough officers, until we have enough officers in this community, we're not going to get to where we need to be. Yes, we have problems, but yes, do they do their job to the best of their ability. All we need to do is have accountability. Take those computers in those cars and put them up on the screen in the mayor's office. And when you look at the screen, you're going to see where the police are. Matter of fact, let's put accountability in all of our, our, all of our employees of the city. What we're going to do, we're going to put you on the computer, these things that we really love. And we're going to say, hey, I see where you are, I know what you're doing and you are in the community. You're making a difference. You're making a difference. When you see those things, then we can come as a community and be collectively helping our police department. I had a neighborhood watch program myself for 10 years. It wasn't me. The police department had situations where they didn't have the personnel that could just come out and be here. Plus, our community is changing. You know, we don't have the people that are interested in making sure that we have a safe place to live. Well, I try to do that all the time. I'm going to be here in Meridian. I'm going to live here. I'm going to make sure that my community is safe. I'm going to do everything that I can to work with the mayor's office and the city council to make sure that those police are properly trained, they have the communications that they need, and they have accountability that they need. And I can assure you, we will be better. It's just a time thing. Crime is going to be here for a long time, but until we change the way that we think about our community and help our children, parents, help your children to do better, then and only then you're going to see a difference. That's why I want to make a difference and I can talk the talk and walk the walk.
Thank you, sir.
All right.
It's a good man. I saw one question with regards to ideas on how to stop gang violence, but I don't think we have that kind of time.
Well, we'll try to get back to it. We want to acknowledge is Kimberly Davis, she did put that question up. Stand by, Kimberly. We will get to it. Let me go to my last and final questions that was submitted by the, the residents of Ward Five. And then we, we, we're still within that hour and a half timeframe, so we still have time to kind of go back to it. So let me go to the last question and I will start out this time with Ms. Lindsay. You'll be first up. And George will be second, Ms. Cockro will be third, and Mr. Willis will be last. And question five reads as follows. Do you see any additional opportunities for recreational activities in your ward? And I'll leave the question up for you, Ms. Ty.
Absolutely. Recreational, that is something that I've even had someone from California say, we don't have enough right here in our ward. I would love a rec center. That would be a dream, like a rec center, like a community center where people can come and probably play some basketball and maybe take some classes, even from the elderly or maybe the play some chess, checkers, mini golf. It would be awesome. They could have an indoor swimming pool. I mean, the ideas and of course, funding, it will be, I'm very smart about trying to get grant writers or trying to get the funding to make sure that happens, but that would be something that I would like to get done in the four years. Having more recreational, like a rec center, community activity center, especially for our senior citizens. They want something to do as well. It's not all about the kids. So let's have a place where the kids and the senior citizens could come and they could learn from each other. Yes, there's definitely room for recreational activities in Ward Five.
Can you hear me?
Yeah, I'm sorry. My mic was muted. I apologize. I'll leave the question on the screen. Question five, do you see any additional opportunities for recreational activities in your ward?
I do. If you look at what's a school, a lot of the kids out there playing basketball sometime. I think we need a community center in, in all the wards. Like Ms. Ty commented about that, we need to be able to like to have activities where people play basketball, play pool. And I think that might be able to help some of the young people to get out of streets, to have something to do. Because right now, they don't have anything to do unless they pay for it. And I think we, we need to be able to put an effort in Ward Five. What's schools in process of being renovated and I hope that they would turn that basketball court, you know, redo the basketball court that maybe have a place for people to play basketball. I think we do. And I think it's time for we have something because we're talking about gangs. We're talking about young people have nothing. They don't have anything to do. And like I say, young people, also our adults, we need something during daytime for our adults, people to come and sit down. We need to be able to bring gospel singers into our community centers. We need to bring concerts for the young people as well. We need to do something to make sure that young people have something to do. Because out of mind is to say the devil workshop. If they don't have nothing to do, but they're going to go out there and be shooting, do everything else. And I think that we need to bring something into. I think that's something positive that whoever is elected will make sure that we work with the mayor office and our community leaders to make sure that happens. We need to do everything we can to make sure that we bring something. We have some other people next to the hospital that they need something to get out and somewhere to go to and stop sitting around because the more they have to do after do, the better it would be. And I think it's be a grand idea to do so. Either way, I do.
Thank you for that, George, and we'll bring up Ms. Cockro. I'll leave the question on the screen. Do you need me to read it out or you see it for yourself?
And I'm not going to spend too much time because I. Oh, I am working with a group called Meridian Social and it's with my local doctor, Dr. Wilson, and a lot of businesses. The stuff where I'm already reading, but the, the problem is to disconnect with it coming from admin all the way down to the citizens of Meridian. So we need to adjust that. I would love to see Ward Five have May Day because it is the fifth month of Sunday be out. I would love to have bouncy houses, have Ward of Galore for the kids and the adults to play with. Just a fun environment for Ward Five to have a May Day. I'm actually working on it if I make it or if I don't make it because it's something that I really want to do. And also a teen cafe. I wanted to try to get started for the teens because I feel that when you put children in a, in a concentrated space, they'll be able to free themselves. We give these children too much freedom, point blank period. We give them to us. Remember, the news used to say, it's 10 o'clock, where's your child? We need to start asking ourselves that around 6 o'clock. It's 16. Do you know where your child is? 6 o'clock, we have a problem. There's no, there's nothing out here in the streets for our children. So, um, sorry, that's Tristan. But we just need to get families involved because once you have family, even for the children who don't have a consistency at home of family, if we can get that community family involved, we would see less crime, we would see more togetherness. We have to come together in all things about.
Okay, all right. Thank you for that. And it's okay if your kid wants to come in and be a part of the live. This is perfectly fine. You know, we didn't borrow it an hour and 20 minutes of your time, so kids are ready for mama. So it's all right. So all right, last, last candidate up for the last question would be Mr. Willis. You would, sir. I'll leave the question up. It says, do you see any additional opportunities for recreational activities in your ward?
Yes, I see soccer. Our kids are not into soccer. For some reason, we're not allowing them to participate. But we have a new parking recreation director who's very articulate, is very smart person. And with his innovation, what he can make happen for our children, involve them. And I noticed someone said something about, why is it that we only have kids involved in basketball? Guess what? We have volleyball. We have golf. We have tennis. We have soccer. Those are the things that we need to enlighten our children with. And when you do that, guess what is required? It is required of you as a parent to be with your children, to watch your children. They call it personal responsibility. The only way that we can save our children's is through personal responsibility. I don't want a coach to tell my child what to do, to guide my son, my daughter, my grandkids. I want to be there with them. I want to be a part of the solution, not just give you my children. And I want to be held accountable for my kids. It's very important. We want them to have fun. We want to give them various things to do in this community. There are a lot of things we must, we can do. And one thing, people, let's do this. When you have a ball field, when you have a basketball court, will you please take care of it? We don't have any upkeep. You said kids don't have anything to do. Well, look at what they're going to. It is deplorable. Our facilities are not up to par. Our swimming pools in the east end are not up to par. There are other things in our community that are not up to par. And look at the Frank Cochran Center, my friends. We should have had that Frank Cochran Center back already. Guess what? People are dragging their feet. Let's try to get something new in here. Why are you going to start on another project before you finish the deal with what you have going right now? Deal with the Frank Cochran Center. That is going to be an activity based place. That's where we're going to make sure that our kids are secure and they're safe. Let's do that. I think that will work.
All right. Thank you for your time there. I'll bring all the candidates back on. I think we lost Mr. Parks. He did tell me he was at work and he could stay on as long as possible. So it may be, maybe the end for him. But nonetheless, we still have three candidates on, Mr. Willis and Ms. Cockro and Ms. Lindsay. Again, guys, we, we finished within that a lot of time that I was trying to stay within that hour and a half. So I really appreciate you guys so much. I'm going to give you guys each one minute to give a final thought. And after the final thought, we'll get Pastor Graves to share his thoughts about what he, what he has heard tonight. And we'll end it in prayer. So we don't want anybody to leave before we end it in prayer. Of course, we want to, of course, acknowledge our Lord and Savior, Jesus Christ. And we would do that in the, at the beginning and the end of the program. So guys, please stand by and do not leave before we give the benediction, as the pastor would say in church. Give me that offering before you leave. All right. All right. Pastor Graves, your, your thoughts real quick before I give him a minute input?
Outstanding. I enjoyed everyone and I was just taking notes, doing more listening than anything else. And I'm praying for Meridian. I pray for our nation. I'm praying for Meridian. Why? I'm in New York. You're in Mississippi. What, what do I care about Meridian? Well, as I had shared on our last debate, mayoral debate, my vested interest in Meridian is to see people tap into untapped potential. There's a lot of potential in Meridian, but Meridian has not caught up with the rest of Mississippi and dare I say, the rest of this country. What I am hearing and for those who are spiritual, hear me in the spirit, that for too long, Meridian has been behind. And Meridian takes two steps forward and three steps backward. And this has to stop. So that is why I will pray for Meridian and the people of Meridian. And what I also see is an unequal distribution of wealth and an educational system that is falling behind. In order for our children to compete in the workforce, they need a quality education. It is difficult to compete if you don't have an education. So it's one thing to offer education. It's another thing to offer quality education. And all of these things we understand requires resources. We must have a political base that is not morally bankrupt. And what do I mean by that? We must have a political base that is determined to serve the community. It's not going to just take a mayor or a councilman or councilwoman. It must be a collaborative effort of citizens and elected officials working together to solve some of these complex problems. Otherwise, as I have said before, and I will continue to say, we will continue to talk about these problems without solutions. And education is very key. We must, again, as I said, be service minded. We must see what can we do to help this generation and generations to come. Meridian must have a vision for the future. If it doesn't have a vision, it will continue to, to go in a circle. And this not only, I'm not picking on Meridian, this is our country actually. So I, this is what I'm seeing and I just want to yield there. There's so much more I would like to say, but this is not my program. But I just wanted to say, share that with you, what I'm seeing in the realm of the spirit with regards to the direction of Meridian. I yield back.
Well, I appreciate that, Pastor Graves. I appreciate your wisdom and your spiritual insight and whatever the Lord puts on your heart to speak about means you're more than welcome to speak it. Everybody's not going to like what's being said, but that's okay. They're, they're, they could create on their own program and, and, and run it how they want to run it. So I have no problem with what you said and we're glad that we have someone all the way from New York, which Pastor Graves is broadcasting out of New York. And to have someone that far up who care enough about Meridian to give his input and to spend time on this program to help ask the question that was submitted. All right, guys, you can all unmute your mic real quick and I'm going to give you guys a final thought real quick and we'll have one minute. Just try to stay within that one minute timeframe so we can, we can go with the benediction in this program again. For those who are just now tuning in or who tune in late, you're watching Parks Investigative Live. I'm your host, Investigator Parks, alongside to my right, my co-host, Pastor Kevin Graves. And we have four of the Ward Five City Councils, excuse me, candidates. I don't know why I want to say city council women and, and men, but we have the four candidates on. This is the Democratic debate. The Republican challenger advised he, he didn't want to come on and debate until after a candidate has been successfully, successfully won the Democratic primaries. So out of respect for that, I accepted his response and we will, if you guys, whoever, which one of you come out of the Democratic primaries would like to debate with the Republican challenger, Mr. Acton, we would do that at a later date. All right, one minute. Ms. Ty, you're up first.
Yeah, it is my complete pleasure to be a candidate here for Ward Five, to be on the city council. And I'm just asking everyone, all the voters to vote Ty Bell Lindsay. Ty should Ty Bell Lindsay on April 6. I've been very awarded a wonderful upbringing here in Meridian. From all the schools that I attended to, to get in my degree and my education and my work experiences. It's led me and fully prepared to be a great councilwoman for the city. I will be the voice. I would do whatever it takes to fight for whatever is needed for this city. I want to be, I want this city to be the queen that it should be. It is a jewel and it has brought so much to me growing up. And I just want to fight for our children, my child, your child, your grandchildren. And for this city to be where it needs to be. More jobs, more opportunities and people to have the quality of life that they so rightfully deserve. It is my duty to work every single day for the city of Meridian and be a servant to this city. And it's great. And it's great. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Ms. Lindsay. Stand by. Don't leave. We're going to do the benediction. Just like I said earlier, the pastor would say, you got to pay that money before you leave. Okay. So just stand by. Pretend you haven't gave your offering or your tithes yet. All right. We'll be done shortly. I promise you. All right, Reverend George, here, here I am mocking what the preacher's saying. You're the reverend. So I hope I didn't, was it any offense to you, but you go ahead and give one minute on your final thought there, sir.
Oh, well, once again, I have enjoyed being a candidate. However, it turned out to be, I would love to be a Catholic for some reason because I would love to be able to bring some things to the seat and, and Ward Five, for Ward Five to flourish. It's not about me and I hope whoever wins the Democratic candidacy, I hope that, you know, whatever they said today, I hope they stick to whatever they're saying because it's not about us, about San Maria. I think Pastor put together, Pastor Graves said best is that we need to, we need to stick together now with the councilmen and what I said. We need to make sure that we do the thing that we say we're going to do. We have talked about it for so long, but we didn't, we stopped need to talk about it and be about it. This is a great city. I have been to other cities in Mississippi. Meridian is a great, great place to be. But we just need to be able to do things, to bring, it's sad to say, it, it should make a difference what side of town you live on. But we should make sure that all the system in really infuses it, make sure that everything, our young people, we need to do more for our young people. We need to do more for, have more policemen stuck on. As a councilman, I would love to be there to be able to help bring those things together. Our city that I love, I've been here all my life. I worked in the city for four, two years. And, and I just feel like that I can bring something to the table to make the city better. There's no candidate on here that I feel have anything against. I think all of them qualified to be a councilman. And what you want, I said that if we're in, I'll be support you a hundred percent because we need somebody that, that's going to do. And I hope, like I said, once again, if you're elected, I hope that you do what you say you're going to do. Because it's important that we, that we, we represent the city of Meridian. It's important that we represent our city. We could talk good things all the time, but be sure that we, we be about what we talk about. Because we need things in our ward five. Because we need things in our ward five. It needs to be improving, and and we need to be there. And thank you.
All right. Thank you so much for that, Reverend George. If you need to leave by any chance, uh, feel free. I know you you uh at work. We appreciate.
Get ready to go. And like I said, good luck to each one, to you all. I'm looking forward to seeing one of us there. And I think that we need to pray together, our 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 councilmen to pray together, you know, then that way we'll be, we'll be able to work together. Because we need to to be able to do that. Thank you. And Pastor Gray, thank you for your service as well, and thank you.
Likewise.
Oh, yes.
All right, uh, Ms. Cockro, you had a fan that just gave you a huge shout out. I mean, at a very important part of the program. So uh, with that momentum, I'll give you the show.
Listen, I get it. Crime is an issue that we face. Having security for our police officers is a is a subject we face. I understand all these things. And what I'm asking for you is to vote for me, Kristen Cockro, for Ward Five. One thing about me is I cannot be a paid vote, voice. I can't be a paid ballot. People can't come in and say, hey, I'll pay you on the table. It won't. But I've had money and I've been poor. So I understand how important it is to be equally and fair, which is what we need. We do need better jobs with insurance. I get it. I have, I've been researching stuff at work. Okay, just to try to make sure I am able to equip Meridian with what we need to be. This election is so important. We're not voting for the next four years. We're voting for our futures. I need everyone to get out and vote. It is so important that you choose Kristen Cockro for Ward Five City uh Council. I'm focusing on family, innovation, values, and excellence. If you go back and look at my last, my post, ever since I started um Facebook, um, I started one for my page and I see all of the other candidates filling the food. But I am a trendsetter and I am willing and I am wanting to work for you. I want you all to call me anytime. Well, my husband might say, or somebody might say, you know, it's too late. But I want you all to call me, text me, email me. I really want to support. You have not been seeing my signs because I am going eco-friendly. We already have a waste problem within the city waste management. So you don't see a lot of signs. But that does not mean I am not here. I am not present. Every time I am able to talk to anybody, I do that. I don't care if I'm running down the street and I see an old man sweeping up. I stop the car. Do you need help? I'm that person you want to have for Ward Five City Council because I care about our families and I care about our community. And guys, I just really, if you have any questions or concerns, please reach out to me because I love Meridian and we have the best to become. So thank you all so much for joining us tonight, and I hope to see you at the polls for Kristen Cockro Ward Five on April the 6th and June the 8th.
All right. Thanks a lot. All right. Last up, uh, Mr. Al Willis, you have one minute for for final thought.
Thank you, sir. I um, I I missed something here earlier about a grant writer that we need for our community. If we have a grant writer, that's going to take a lot of pressure off of our tax dollars that we have locally. We are economically oppressed area. And when you acknowledge that, that means we got to have some funding coming in from the federal government. And if we had a grant writer, we can make sure that that happened. We got some systems in our city that we're gonna have to make sure that they are up to par in order for us to continue and draw industry. We got to draw some industry. I love Meridian, guys. I want to tell the truth about a Meridian. I want to promise you this. I will be faithful. I will listen to your concerns. You can call me. Oh, by the way, my number hadn't changed since I came to Meridian. Six oh one four eight three zero nine seven one. Hey, a home phone, you know. That's what I do. I love this city. I love you guys. Let me sit at the table. I've ate from the table where the people make the decisions or allow me for four years to eat from the table so that I can make a difference for the citizens of Meridian. Love you. God bless you.
All right. Uh, there you have it, guys. We thank you so much um for taking your time out to be on Parks Investigative Live for this, what we call virtual debate. Uh, really enjoyed hearing from the candidates, even though I would say this, uh, uh, my home is Meridian. I grew up uh right there off of 16th Street, 29th Avenue. Uh, the border, the just the beginning of what they call the Red Line District. So uh, that is, Meridian is my home, but however, I do live in the county. So I can't vote in the city. Uh, but however, I enjoy uh uh hearing from you candidates. Uh, my mother, who still lives in Ward Five, right there off 16th Street and uh 28th, 29th Avenue. Uh, Ms. Clara Parks, I'm the the baby of 10 children. And if you didn't know, George Parks is my oldest brother, but I can't vote for him. So so it's just, there's no bias there. Uh, but we wish all of you, uh, we'll be praying for all of you and wish all of you the best. And whoever comes out of the Democratic primary, uh, I'm pretty sure that the the city will stand behind you. Uh, just uh, just, just, just stick to what you said tonight, be truthful, uh, be honest and and fight for Meridian and fight for your ward. Uh, you know, and and Ward Five is just as deserving as Ward One. Uh, if if Rose is getting paid in in Ward One, Rose should be getting paid in Ward Five. Now, just my opinion. Again, I I live in the county now, so that's my fighters out here. Uh, but of course, I do travel to the city daily. I work in the city uh with the Reed Club of School District along with uh Ms. Cockro, who's also a uh school district employee. Uh, and she does well with the kids. And then I'm not doing this to endorse her. I just so happen to know her uh by working with her. And I've dealt with Ms. Lindsay uh at the mall, and she had a tough job. And uh, I know everybody uh has their own opinion, but Ms. Lindsay did a good job promoting uh hype. And we can't help what the outsiders do. We 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 can't control who comes in and because we can't discriminate who comes in, we can't control what they're gonna do inside the business. However, she did what she thought was best. And Ms. Lindsay, we appreciate your service for what you've done. Uh, Mr. Willis, I I've known of you. I've heard of you, but I want to commend you for your service uh in the law enforcement field as well as uh being a firefighter. Uh, if you don't know, I do serve in law enforcement as well. Uh, been a certified policeman since the year 2002. I had a breaking period, of course, but uh after a few years of a breaking period, I got back into law enforcement. And uh, if 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 God see fit, uh, that's what I plan on retiring in that area, although it's getting tough. Trust me, it's getting real tough. Uh, especially, and I know I'm getting off subject after watching the uh opening trial of the Chavez uh case there in Minnesota. After listening to some of that, the opening statements, it it really bothered me. Nonetheless, uh, that's a whole nother uh uh show that me and Pastor Graves will probably do uh at a later time. But guys, on on a serious note, I know I've taken a lot of your time. You guys are probably itching to go. I I from the bottom of my heart, Pastor Gray, we're we're contested this. I really appreciate you guys for being on. This ran real smooth. Uh, the mirror debate was a little challenging. Uh, but you know, we had, you know, that that was expected. But you guys, uh, you you guys did real good. Uh, and I I just want to commend you for that. Uh, you you acted like adults. Not saying that the mayor candidates did, but you guys showed a lot of character. So I think any one of you guys can uh either be a councilman or councilwoman uh for Ward Five. So again, uh, uh, my heartfelt uh wishes to you. And Pastor Graves, uh, I'm gonna shut up and let you do the benediction. And so these candidates can get out there and get with their family.
Amen. Amen. Thank you so much, Brother Cornelius. I just want to thank all of the candidates uh for their participation tonight. Mrs. Lindsay and Cockro, Mr. Willis, God bless you. Mr. Parks, God bless you. And uh, thi- this was great. And I'm I'm, I'm really privileged to be a part of this. And I thank you, my dear brother Cornelius, for allowing me to be a partaker in uh your vision. And I thank you so much. And I thank you to all the viewers who tuned in tonight as well. Uh, your participation and your questions were were outstanding because you, all of you have a vested interest in the city of Meridian. My vested interest in Meridian, as I said earlier, is to see people uh rise from the ashes. I don't like to see poverty. I don't like to hear about people who are broken and they don't know where to go to get help. And what I'm hoping for is that Meridian will be resurrected, that there will be uh a a a newness, a movement in 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 the city of Meridian, Mississippi. And my fight uh in this is to war for Meridian in the realm of the spirit. Heavenly Father, I thank you for what you have done tonight. I thank you for my dear brother, uh, your manservant Cornelius. I thank you for the candidates who participated tonight. Lord, I pray that, Lord, you would use these men and women for your glory. That, Lord, you would take them to higher heights and deeper depths in understanding and community service. I pray that, Lord, these individuals, whoever's elected, will be more than just an elected official. But this person will be a servant of the community. This person uh would be the eyes and ears for the community. When the community hurts, they hurt. I am praying that who has, who who's ever elected mayor, who's ever elected uh to city council, that, Lord, they would truly have a heart for people, that it is all about people. It is not about filthy lucre. It is not about mammon, but it is about service to people. This is the heart of of Meridian. I am praying that there will be a a a spiritual transformation that people who were once poor would begin to now tap into what they are called to do and move accordingly. So I decree and declare that, Lord, you are developing programs in the community to bring about uh uh job awareness, to bring about educational opportunities, to bring about the 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 building of the infrastructure of the city of Meridian. I am praying for a revival over the city of Meridian that would shake the 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 state of Mississippi. And yes, it would, it would even cause other states to take notice of what's going on there. So this is our prayer, that, Lord, you would do this. Why? Because you can. And why? Because you are God. Lord, I commit every worry, every fear, every tear, every struggle into your care. Let your kingdom come and let your perfect will be established in the city of Meridian, Mississippi. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
All right. Before I go real quick, guys, a special shout out to my my special friend of mine, Mr. Kara. Uh, thank you for all you you do in the behind the scenes. Thank you for supporting the program. Uh, much respect to you. And I know you still aren't watching. Again, thank you so much. And then I love you so much. So I really appreciate all the work uh that you do behind the scenes to help this program run accordingly. Uh, Pastor Graves, thank you so much, sir. Uh, all the way from New York. Uh, what a pleasure to have you on as the co-host. Uh, Ms. Lindsay, again, I know I said it earlier. Thank you so much uh for our spending time with us, letting the viewers know why they should vote for you. Same to you, Ms. Cockro. Thank you so much. And I know I see your son uh chiming in a few times, so he's ready to spend time with his mom. So thank you so much. And Mr. Willis, again, sir, thank you for your service. Thank you for coming on to the program. And thank you for enduring this hour and 42 minutes that I had you on. Uh, tell your wife to forgive me. I didn't mean to stay on this long. But I I definitely want to give you guys thanks and credit. And thanks to uh my brother, George, uh, for taking time out of his work schedule to come on the program. Uh, to the to the viewers, and guys, you're free to leave. Uh, to the viewers, uh, yes, I will try to do another debate with Ward One. I reached out to one of the candidates, unable to reach the other one. So uh, any Ward Three, I would like to uh have a Ward Three debate. But again, guys, uh, when I I reach out, uh, if I don't get response, I don't try to put pressure on people because uh, you know, this is just something I I decided to do because we're still in the midst of a pandemic. These virtual debates seem to be helpful to the ones who can't get out and actually attend the uh uh with the traditional forms and shake hands and and get to ask one-on-one questions. So uh, this virtual debate will stay on Parks Investigative Live as well as my personal Facebook page. Anyone who shared this live, this program will remain up as well as the previous programs that we have done. So again, candidates, good luck. Thank you so much. And after the primaries, whoever come out, we'll do another debate. Thanks, guys. Enjoyed it.
Thank you.
My pleasure. God bless you guys. Be safe now.